This conference will now be recorded.
Mine's on. Test. It's a dud.
We got a dud.
Yeah, two duds.
Two duds.
No, not you. Never.
Apparently they didn't get hit.
Tom's fairly loud. Right, Tom? You can be loud.
Is there another one for him or no?
That one isn't working either.
No, all the other ones have red lights.
They should have a red light on.
Sounded like it worked.
Need to get loud.
It did sound like it worked.
Yeah.
Maybe the little lights just not working.
All right. Good evening. The time being 6:00 PM, I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, January 28, 2025 Tilton Planning Board meeting. This is a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment on the proposed 2025 zoning amendments. So it opened at 6:01. And we'll leave it up. We'll give it a little bit, I guess.
John Scanlon called me and suggested that we add in to the short-term rentals. And I don't know if it's in here or not. I don't think it is because he read them. That when they are sold, that that person has to come in and renew the application so that we have their updated information.
I thought we talked about that, yeah.
Well, I believe the initial registration is is in there, but it doesn't say anything about whether or not that's like inheritable.
All right, so.
He also wanted to make us make sure that the property owner was responsible for violations of laws and ordinances. Because they're transient tenants, so if they damaged something on the property or violated noise ordinance, then went out of town.
That'd be between the landowner and the tenant, I think.
Yeah, it's under number four approval criteria transfer of ownership.
Well, that doesn't mean reapply to get their own. That just means their contact information, they should have their Yeah, so they're responsible.
Because this is what has been posted at our public notice. We can't make corrections if something doesn't sound like or punctuation.
I can't hear Janice.
Oh, yeah, we can't hear Jan.
Our microphone didn't work.
It is in there. Yeah, and if we make changes to this, it means another public hearing.
Thank you, Pat. I was just mentioning that.
But that's in there, and I told them on the other, I said, you know, this becomes, it's not its own entity. It becomes an article within our zoning. And we already have at least two penalty clauses in our zoning ordinance. So.
All right, so I'm going to start reading all the amendments just to get them right into the record. Right, is that what we have to do or no?
No, you don't have to, but you can.
You don't have to read them, but if you do change them, that means that you have to have another meeting and another public and another public hearing.
And we don't have time by February 3rd.
Correct.
My schedule, I don't know about anybody else's, but that time of year. All right.
Probably just say like amendment number one, anybody have comments?
Yeah, so this is a we have the amendment number one, which is a change to the building permit renewal, which is under the proposed on your sheet. Does anyone have any changes? Comments?
I don't.
Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to amendment number two, which is really just a one-word change to Article 10.5.1. And it clarifies running water to potable water.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Damon.
Please explain why you're changing this.
Give me one second.
Second.
Is this the terminology for running water to potable was just the terminology?
It was to make it so that the water was drinkable.
And not just
Not just any water, not just water.
River water or
Yeah, suck it out of a brook or a pond or whatever, it's drinkable water.
10 points.
He wasn't here for that.
Well, what's what's the qualifications for potable water now? Hear me out for a second. Say a person has a shallow water well. Does that well have to be tested? Who's going to test it for potability?
So, for example, when I was a health officer, I would get called by tenants because they suspect they're drinking water, it wasn't safe to drink.
Yeah.
And if they were on wells, artesian or dug well, I would take a water sample and bring it down to the state and have it tested. And tell them, yes, it's safe to drink. The whole idea is is especially when we get into these Yeah, I gotta stop calling them bed and breakfast. The
Short-term rental.
Short-term rentals. It's one thing for me to own a home, I have dug wells. And I know sometimes my chloroform level is high. Well, for me, that's just algae or green stuff growing and it's I'll drink it. A certain level DES will tell you, you shouldn't be drinking that. Well, I'm used to it, it's not going to bother me. Somebody from the city, it will. I'm going to rent that as a short-term rental. And my water should be safe to drink according to Department of Environmental Services standards.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
One of the things in that was discussed was otherwise someone could use swamp water as their water in their house.
Yeah.
And we don't want that, so.
Or they could potentially like tie off from a like sprinkler or fire suppression system because it's like we have water.
Yep.
One of the things we discussed at this meeting was that we're not done with our zoning ordinances, we're going to have to spend time through the year and go through them. I mean, I can tell you right now, I just found two different enforcement clauses. And I know there's a third one under one of the waters and they're different. They're not the same. That's right. So we got some work to do.
All right.
So make notes. Tom, that was a good one.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, everyone's okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Amendment number three is a little more involved, so I'm just, it involves Article 10.5.2, which currently reads, "All dwelling units in all commercial, public, or industrial buildings shall be connected to a sewage disposal system. When a public system is not available, a private sewer sewage system is required. When a public system is not available, a private sewer sewage system is required. Portable toilets, commonly known as porta-potties or outhouses, shall not be acceptable. The type, size, location, and construction of all subject tanks and drainage fields shall conform to all current rules and regulations promulgated by the New Hampshire Water Supply and Pollution Control System Commission and shall be approved by both the NHWSPCC and the appropriate town official. Approval by the NHWSPCC shall not be binding on the town, nor shall such approval by the NHWSPCC negate conformity with the aforementioned rules and regulations." Our proposed amendment, again, 10.5.2, "All dwelling units in all commercial, public, or industrial buildings shall be connected to a potable water system, either municipal or private, and to a sewage disposal system. When a public system is not available, a private sewer or sewage system is required. Portable toilets, commonly known as porta-potties or outhouses, shall not be acceptable substitutes for sewage disposal." The size, I'm sorry, "The type, size, location, and construction of all subject tanks and drainage fields shall conform to all current rules and regulations promulgated by the New Hampshire Water Supply and Pollution Control Commission and shall be approved by both the NHWSPCC and the appropriate town official. Approval by the NHWSPCC shall not be binding on the town, nor shall such approval by the NHWSPCC negate conformity with the aforementioned rules and regulations."
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Damon.
The only difference I see is it's eliminating one sentence from the covenant.
It also changed the word to potable.
Well, if you will read in the second line, "When a public system is not available, a private sewer system is required. When a public system is not available, a private sewer system is required." It's repeated.
Okay. On the current one.
On the current one.
Okay.
Is the intention of the board to eliminate one of those sentences?
I think that's just a typo. Yes, okay. Yep.
Okay. Just a clarification, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Damon.
I think one other thing of note is the fact that we're adding water, whereas previously it was just for sewer.
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Any other discussion? Everyone okay? Moving on. Amendment number four is a new amendment, which will be which will be Article 17? Okay, I do know my Roman numerals. Prepared by the Tilton Planning Board. And it reads, "Are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number four as proposed by the Planning Board for the Town zoning ordinance to add Article 17, short-term rentals, STR? Article 17, short-term rentals. One, definition. These will be available on the town website, correct? On the ballot, these primarily will be on the ballot on election day. One, definition, lodging, short-term. A dwelling unit where transient lodging is provided for compensation for stays of between 1 and 30 consecutive nights and where the dwelling unit would normally be considered a residential living unit not associated with regulated commercial activities such as a hotel, motel, rooming, boarding, lodging house, or bed and breakfast. Two, purpose. The regulations aim to preserve the character of residential neighborhoods, protect the housing stock for year-round residence, and ensure the safety for STR occupants. Three, application procedure. STRs, short-term rentals, are allowed in the resort commercial, RC, and regional commercial, RG, zoning districts with a conditional use permit, a CUP. The owner must apply for the CUP before operating a short-term rental, STR, paying $150 fee and renewed annually in January. The land use department will handle the application for processing. Four, approval criteria. Owner information, contact details for service of legal process must be provided. The owner must certify compliance with health, life safety, and building requirements such as, but not limited to, functioning smoke or CO detectors, emergency egress windows, and fire extinguishers. A maximum occupancy limit based on the number of bedrooms plus two additional people. No on-street parking shall be allowed. Proof of licensing. Proof of a valid New Hampshire's room and meals tax is required. Transfer of ownership, if the property is sold and intends to continue as a STR, the owner must submit updated contact information. Five, responsibilities of the owner. Owners must ensure proper waste removal, onsite parking, and adherence to occupancy limits, among other conditions. Six, revocation of permit and penalties. Revocation, failure to comply with the regulations can lead to permit revocation after violations with escalating penalties for repeated infractions. Unauthorized rentals. Operating an STR without a valid CUP can lead to fines and penalties as per state law. Seven, nuisances and health dangers. Complaints about nuisances or health risk can trigger an inspection of the STR. Eight, accessory apartment use. Property owners with with both a principal dwelling unit and an accessory apartment can apply for a CUP for only one of the units, not both, for STR use. This ordinance is structured to balance the interests of maintaining neighborhood character, ensuring safety, and regulating the use of residential properties for short-term rentals.
That's repeated twice. But I guess it's all right.
Well, I think they, because I had said that, and I think they just wanted to end it that way, too.
I'm not an English major, but on the bottom of number four, it's just a grammatical thing to me. Under transfer of ownership, it says if the property is sold and intends to continue STR, should that be continue as a or as an? That's what I suggest.
Yeah, it's grammatical.
Yeah, it's just a, it didn't flow when I was reading it. If the property is sold and tends to
Continue as an STR.
As a or as an, I'm not sure.
As an STR.
How that as a STR, short-term rental. So if the property is sold and tends to continue as a short-term rental, the new owner must submit updated contact information.
So a question that I have is, is this supposed to cover like month-to-month residential apartment rentals as well? Just because with the wording, I'm not sure.
Having specified STR.
But but so the definition of a short-term rental is lodging between, you know, 1 and 30 consecutive nights. Not all months have you know, 30 or more than 30.
But if they're month-to-month and they can stay one day later into the next month, it doesn't apply.
I think transient is probably the more definitive word here, a dwelling unit where transient lodging. Transient as opposed to, you know, a more permanent situation like an apartment would be. I mean, I know some people rent month-to-month, but they still rent them with the intention of being there longer than just a week or a weekend or a couple of weeks or
Right, my concern is I just want to make sure that we're not like banning month-to-month rentals everywhere except
No. But again, let's make a note of that and maybe we can improve on that for next year.
Yeah, because maybe it should be, you know, first days of less than one month or, you know, less than, you know.
I can tell you that definition comes a lot from DRA's definition of what transient is and when they can start taxing people for room and meals tax.
You could just put a parenthesis and say not month-to-month rentals.
They know technically if you don't have a lease agreement, the default is
Make sure you're using the microphone, please, sorry, because whatever you just said wasn't recorded.
I just know that like if someone doesn't have a lease agreement, the default is month-to-month as as far as, you know, their tenant rental rights. So I just want to make sure that we're clear that this isn't supposed to prevent month-to-month housing.
Mr. Chair, that's not the intent and and you have to look at the zones that it's in, the resort commercial and the regional commercial as well.
Correct, that was my next point. So it's only allowed in certain
It's only allowed in certain areas.
Certain areas, resort commercial and regional commercial.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Damon.
Just, I just want to get a feel from the board. How many people are going to come flocking down here to get an application for licenses for short-term rentals?
Mr. Chair. They probably, they probably will not. They probably will not. But they will be, they will be based on permits and building permits and violations. We will be catching up with them.
Once we start, once they, I'm not health officer anymore, once they start locating them and finding out they're not, they don't have a CUP, they can be shut down with this ordinance. Once this passes, then they could be shut down until they do comply.
Good.
And we do find out about them because they advertise themselves.
Oh, yeah.
We know we have some.
And as health officers, I got called from people who were transient lodges with them.
Really?
Yeah. No hot water.
That's why we found it necessary to.
Well, I just
Hold on, there's multiple conversations, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Damon.
I was just wondering about, you know, whether our backside is covered on this or not, you know, I mean, if somebody has lakefront property and they use it once a month and they lease it up, you know, they rent it out the other three weeks in the month. Is that a short-term rental? Of course it is. But are they going to, are they going to come down here and comply with, that's that's just what I, I'm throwing that out there and and I know that eventually catch up with them, but you know, if it was me, I'd go as long as I could before I went down there and, you know, paid the 150 bucks.
Well, if the if the house in question has a neighbor that doesn't like the fact that every other day there's new people in there, they may say, go to the town and say, hey, where's the, is this person permitted? And then it would start some type of a reaction.
Okay.
I do have another correction adjustment under the definition of lodging short-term, just to bold that. Lodging short-term. Just because down through, when you get to approval, it matches everything else that you have. And that's just my suggestion. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
I have a question about Section 3, the application procedure. Is the $150 fee paid every single year? Okay.
Yes.
Anyone else from the board to comment?
Just a grammatical thing. Application procedure. The last bullet. I'm, I'm, these aren't numbers. But it's the last one, "Land use department will handle the application for processing." About land use department will process the applications. It just seems cumbersome, but that's just me.
I think that's the way Catherine suggested is better.
Yeah, because you're going to be processing and not
Is everyone okay with that suggestion?
Yes.
The land use department will process the the application. You say potato, I say potato. Tomato, tomato, let's call the whole thing off. All right. I heard that sound on the radio today, so. Any other comments from the board or the public?
Yes. The approval criteria section is, there a reason we don't just require a certificate of occupancy for the the property?
Well, residential properties don't need a CO. If they're, like, if I have my home and I'm going to have a rental, I don't need a certificate of occupancy, that's why we're putting this in.
Actually, you do.
For me, oh, yeah, when it's new build.
Well, we have, there's a certificate of occupancy. I can never remember the other one.
I don't need one every year.
Assembly.
So if it, you know, if it came up, it's like my house, it's no rental. But if it ever came out, I would get a, the other one.
The place of assembly?
No. On page 38 in our ordinance.
Let's turn it off.
Certificate of inspection.
Certificate of occupancy.
A certificate of inspection.
Catherine's right, a certificate of inspection.
10.4.2, certificate of inspection.
There it is.
That's that's only if they do something that requires a permit.
Well, that's how you pick them up. So, I mean, we you think of the task of going through the entire town to make sure every building had a certificate of occupancy. So that's why they came up with certificate of inspection. So as we go along, we'll pick up properties and make sure that they're habitable, so to speak, safe to live in. That always bothers me. My safe to live in may not be the same as somebody else's safe to live in.
So I know we we do talk about accessory apartment or accessory dwelling.
It's different.
Completely different.
Completely different.
APUs and ADUs are completely different.
Completely different.
Yep.
Okay, I will have to look into that then. But what if someone has like a duplex or a triplex or something in resort commercial that they want to short term rental, you know, both or, you know, all three of the units, you know, something where it's, you know, not a five plus commercial residential where it would be like a bed and breakfast or, you know, something.
They would have.
This was applied.
This would apply. They would have to go to the zoning board for a conditional use permit.
And and so like if you had you know, a property with a duplex, you could get a permit to use both units as short term rentals?
It says in here, I was looking for it. So it it said you can only use one.
Yeah, your house or the.
Or the but that's only if.
If I own a duplex and I'm not living in it, I could apply for a short term rental permit. But if I live, if I if I, let's just say I had a triplex, a three, and I lived in one, I can only use one.
For short term rentals.
For short term rentals.
Not commercial or tenement buildings.
I think we're going to find that our land use personnel are going to say, hey, after they've used this for a while, we need to straighten out this, we need to straighten out that. Usually what happens when you have an ordinance like this.
Yeah.
You find the holes.
If it passes.
If it does.
We're not putting this zoning in so people will all of a sudden do short term rentals. People are already doing short term rentals. We're putting this in to cover those people who are.
Keep in mind, when this was initiated, it was really this particular document on the short term rentals was going to be used as a framework so that it can be built upon for the upcoming years as things arise like being discussed tonight. And at that time, as they come up, they can be addressed by the board, by the planning board, and something can be put into writing in July and held over until we're ready to do the amendments in a little later in the year, but we'll already have a list of things that have come up over and over again that need addressing.
Which is true of any zoning, any we make maybe one worry changes or a sentence removed or inserted. That's how it was always done.
All right. Any other comment? Are you good? So it's all, everything we changed or yeah, everything was in agreement. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing at six thirty four P M. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes from November twelfth and January fourteenth. I have January fourteenth in my packet. I don't have. Yeah. Oh, we decided to delay the approval to the next meeting of November twelfth. We decided it's in the last page of the January fourteenth minutes.
I think mine's in my folder.
Yes.
I think we were just waiting for a full board, or maybe it was the time.
I think I put mine in my folder. We have the fourteenth, we can go on that.
I need January, uh, November twelve.
Yeah, I I think I left mine in my in the folder.
I don't have them in my packet from the last.
The packet.
Oh, wait, maybe I do.
Yeah, they were much smaller. Had them last week and we had all our folders out here and I just stuck mine in. So it was November twelfth, right?
November twelfth.
Yeah, I have a copy if anybody needs to see it.
I I need a copy. Unless it's on my phone. Does everyone need a copy?
I don't need a copy.
Can this have any copies?
Because I got my Clark Rhodes still in here because he postponed. And my notes. Who do I give this application to? Catherine.
What is it?
Who do I give this to?
Janice.
Um, when you go downstairs.
Yeah.
Um, set it on, I set it back on the town court desk.
Okay.
Or the other thing you could do is slide it on the, you know what, slide it on to Amy Duspen's door.
I think I think Kim's downstairs.
Oh, Kim's down there. Okay. Because then I have to still do budget. So if she's here, that's great. Thank you, my dear. Everybody was here on the twelfth.
Yeah, I wasn't here, so.
Oh, this is where that a girl that was wanting to be on the planning board.
Yeah.
Now she's not.
I think she probably would have been really good. That's okay. I just stick that back in there.
That's pressure. I didn't. So I guess we'll move the minutes of November twelfth to the floor for discussion. There are second. Second. All right, we'll just talk about. Does everyone had a chance to review the minutes of November twelfth? Twenty twenty four.
Even though I just lost him again.
I know. That's why I stole this team. Motion to accept the minutes of November twelfth as written.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed. Minutes of January fourteenth. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Mr. Damon, did you get a chance to review them? No, well, yeah, we can't, I mean.
Yeah.
Now we're in January, so.
Minutes is short.
Yeah. In a sense, yes.
Yeah, it's all that, yeah.
All right. So.
Make a motion to accept them.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Two abstentions.
There's three. Is that still passed? There's three. Yeah.
Yes, because.
Well, it's three yeses, three exemptions and three yeses.
Well, do I have to just, do I just have to do present?
You don't have to. So if you're not present at a meeting, you don't have to abstain. You can correct minutes for for grammar, for spelling, blah, blah, blah. But certainly if you're not there, you're not going to want to change, you know, the body of the definitions, whatnot.
Three yes.
And three abstained.
Three abstained.
But isn't three a quorum?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, so.
But why would Nate have to abstain if he wasn't here at the time? He was not on the board at the time.
They came back.
Right, that's 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 my question is.
Now our quorum is four because we have Nate.
Instead of abstaining, should I, do I just not vote or do I vote?
Before it was five. Now we have six seated as one members.
So.
So our quorum is four.
We need four voting yes.
Well, no, it's want to want to be three, two, because I because I can't vote.
Oh, can he?
He doesn't do anything.
But we're voting today, though.
Doesn't matter. He wasn't here. He was not on the board.
He can vote. He can vote. He is sitting here.
He's he can vote.
A full member. He can vote.
He does not have to abstain.
Then I accept the minutes as written?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. He can. All right. Motion passes.
So before we jump to adjourn, at our last meeting, we were given these land use permit fees and we didn't accept them, approve them, or I know we kind of looked at them and talked about them a little bit. But I will add that when the selectmen got them, and hopefully Pat can remember because I don't remember what the solution was. I was concerned about people because it says new construction. Well, that could be changing changing a door. And I don't know, does anybody should have to get a building permit to just put in a new door? Structures, alterations, additions or repairs. And I made that comment at the selectman's meeting and they came up with a solution. But I don't see it written here.
That?
Yes.
Help us.
Do you remember what that resolution was?
It was just a building permit.
But we were going to actually add it to this somehow. There was going to be language here.
They don't need to get a building permit to change change a door.
But Tim suggested language that we add. Because it doesn't say that.
Does it just say new construction?
I don't know, Janice. Do we have a a new one already printed out? That would include Tim's change that we had at the selectman's meeting.
He wants to go get one.
I mean, there's no real deadline on this.
We're already implementing it.
Right, Pat, I only saw the the finished product that was here afterwards.
Yeah, that's the finished product. That's it, Janice. That's it. So just show Catherine that.
How can you implement them if the planning board hasn't accepted them?
Isn't it the board of selectmen that implements them, not the planning board?
Selectmen suggest to the the planning board. The planning board suggests to the select board. Would actually votes on it.
But there's supposed to be some language.
So we got a vote?
Well, I believe the planning board is supposed to weigh in on it.
Well, so I I think since additions are listed separately from new construction, new construction might be by definition like a a new building of some size, you know, whether that's a, you know, a shed or a single family home or a garage, but.
Anybody interrupting me to mean change a door?
I take new construction as just starting to build either a new structure.
A new building, correct.
Right, you know, because some people would consider an addition as new construction, but additions are listed separately. So maybe we just need to clarify.
Right, and addition is.
It says in here. Permit fees are set by the board of selectmen upon recommendation of the planning board.
Recommendation, correct.
The planning board has not recommended them.
Mr. Chairman.
It's a work in progress.
Mr. Damon. Go ahead.
In some communities, when you a permit is required for any type of any type of work over a certain dollar value. So it'd be over five thousand or ten thousand dollars, you know. A person that wants to build his own deck shouldn't get a permit. You know, or.
You have to.
Well, if you put stairs in, you know, it's it, you know, it all depends on the size of the deck. If it's a four by four deck and you put it. But I'm I'm just saying some municipalities require a permit. Remodeling permit or building permit over a certain dollar value.
On the front page, it does talk about windows and door replacement for renovations right there.
That's a that's a renovation permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't think that would be a new construction.
Well, this is where I think for next year, I'll read you the definition, ten point one, building permit. No building shall be erected erected, altered or improved, including prefabricated mobile homes without having its plans approved in a building permit issued by the board of selectmen and or the building inspector. So technically, a door is an alteration.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
So it would need a permit according to current.
But should so my problem is should a homeowner or building owner, it's not just homeowner, come in, I've got to change out two windows. Rotted sills or whatever, I got to change out two windows. And I'm going to do it myself. I'm going to pay, you know, four hundred bucks to the windows, whatever. And I'm going to change them out myself. Do I need to come in here and pay another couple hundred dollars to get a building permit to change out a couple of windows?
I say no.
I don't think that's fair. And right now, there's no language that says no. And I like the what you said, Tom, about a certain value triggers it.
Yeah, as far as the windows. If it would be window to window. If you're looking to put in a picture window. All regular household window. That would be different, because it could structural integrity. Structure, so in those cases, that's the purpose of the Building Inspector has to allow them to.
But that's not what our ordinance says. Well, it.
Yeah.
Just. Just read it.
No, no building shall be erected, altered, or improved.
Yeah. Without having its plans.
I like Mr. Damon's suggestion, so maybe it's something we need to work on for next year.
Putting in a new door. Putting in a new door is not.
This doesn't have to wait until next year, this doesn't, it. These can be changed.
That, I agree with Catherine, it does not have to wait till next year, this is, this was a work in progress, this is a framework. It does not have to wait, wait until next year, so.
It doesn't go to the voters.
No.
No.
It comes to us, and then we send it back to the selectmen saying, okay.
But I'm saying putting in a new door is not structural change.
But that's opinion.
No, that's, that's a fact.
Our ordinance doesn't say structural change.
Any renovation, addition, blah, 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 is what it says, so we need to change that ordinance next year.
But that's not a renovation either, putting in a new door.
No building shall be erected, altered, or improved, without having its plans approved.
Putting in a new door isn't any one of those things.
Sure it is, you're altered.
It is, it's altered.
It's improving.
I, somebody broke, tried, broke into my house and kicked in my door. I had to get a new door.
Yep, that's altered.
I just, nah, nah.
Is, is painting the interior altered then?
It's subjective, it's like, so whose interpretation?
I, I'd like the idea.
Alter means structurally change. And I did not structurally change the door.
Well, that's what Janice said, yeah, Janice was like, window for window, door for door.
What my interpretation was, I'm giving it to you.
Yeah, so, so typically it's like-kind repairs don't need a, a, a permit, but we, we can definitely clarify, you know, I, I, I'd like the idea of, you know, uh, you know, some kind of, of, of price value, although the only catch there is sometimes, you know, there are things that are less than a thousand dollars, which really should get an inspection if someone's making an alteration.
Well, the only thing I was just thinking of about that, even though I like the idea is.
You know, new.
Let's say I'm going to redo my, my bathroom. Well, that can be very expensive, get the bathroom redo it, and I say, well, okay, I'm going to replace the window this week. And it's less than, so I, okay, I'm going to go replace my window. Well.
Just the toilet.
I'm, I'm going to put in a new floor, and it's less than. You see what I mean, I piecemeal the project. Well, now there's no building permit, but if I came in and say I'm gutting my bathroom and redoing it, and it's going to cost me, I don't know, what does it cost, four or $5,000? Yeah, so now that's going to generate a permit, so, yeah, this is kind of a lot about.
Keep your mouth shut, or be smart and plan and spend.
Yeah.
We can put it on next week, next agenda. To go over that.
I, I, I do think we, we need to add a definition for new construction. Just because that would then, you know, clarify some of the concerns where, you know, okay, new construction is listed, and we can go new construction, you know, with any net new structure being built.
New construction.
If we change the ordinance, that does go before town meeting. So right now, we've got to work on the fees and add something to that, and then we can work on that for next year. That's what I mean, if we start now for next year, we'll cover a lot of things.
What currently is the fee for a new roof?
It depends.
Does that be, does that be adequate?
It depends on the size of the roof, doesn't it?
Per square foot.
Per square?
Base plus per square foot.
Where do you see roof?
Well, it, it, it doesn't work that way, so it's a structural alteration, addition, or repair.
Would it be?
Replacement, not structural.
Yeah, well, so replacement not structural would be.
Maybe it's a hundred bucks.
A hundred bucks for roof, because it's non-structural.
If you're just doing shingles, I mean, it could be rot on the plywood and everything else.
It's non-structural, so it would be, it would be not, a roof is non-structural.
Hundred bucks.
Why isn't it a repair?
There's a whole can of worms we just opened up.
Yeah, because it could fall under both those.
Where's Pandora?
Or replacement, yeah, it could be repair, replacement.
Well, I, I guess it, it depends on the scope of work, like if you're, you know, having one square of shingles replaced on your asphalt roof, that would be a different permit than if you're getting a brand-new, you know, roof done, which would be different than if you're, you know, changing, you know, the gable style of the roof and adding doors or something.
Depending on the size.
So if a tree.
You have to remember, you have to remember, you folks are not building inspectors, you are not builders, you are not construction workers. So just keep in mind that you are planning board members developing a fee structure. Keep that in mind.
Well, having that been said. So. I have a shed, a long shed, well, let me back up, I had a shed until the snow caved it in. And I was looking at having to replace that roof, and I thought, okay, we're just going to put steel over the roof, and when I had a fellow look at it, a lot of the timbers had rotted because I waited too long, so now it's structural. Now it's, it would, well, it would have been structural if, if the snow and ice hadn't caved it in, but you see what I mean? So, there is an issue, there is. We shouldn't have something that's left to the interpretation of one.
Sure.
So one more, one more comment, Mr. Chair. The Building Inspector worked on this with the Land Use Coordinator and the Finance Director and the Land Use Technician for about a month and a half. Just so you know that, and this is what we came up with. So that it eliminated a lot of what we had, uh, for open to interpretation issues that came into the office prior to this. Just so you know.
Why do you know there was someone that came in about a year or so ago to put a new roof on a building and ended up paying, what, $600 for a building permit?
More than that.
To replace his roof. And then, of course, that increased his property taxes because it was an improvement.
Oh, boy.
So. I just don't like double-dipping, I don't like penalizing people more than we have to.
Yeah, so we work on it.
And it doesn't affect me because.
When they're trying to improve the looks of the community.
I do things piecemeal.
I, I, I guess the flip side there, though, is what, what happens when Walmart needs?
Wait, wait, this. State's speaking, please.
What happens when Walmart needs to redo, you know, their roof, I mean, we could potentially.
Well, they have a commercial.
But do, do we have a different commercial fee schedule?
So. Oh, you don't have a copy of this, I'm sorry.
200, but still, that's a ginormous roof.
I think I have two. It says here, well, that's what.
Commercial's 200.
Can structural alterations, additions, or repairs. So for commercials, it'd be $500, and then 40 cents a square foot.
Non-structural.
If it's non-structural, then it's 200 bucks. That's at Walmart, okay.
Roof situation, just sort of. The, um, roofings fell into this category, over a thousand square feet or under a thousand square feet. Under a thousand square feet was $50, and over a thousand.
But that's not what we have to.
This is the old one.
Right, but.
Yeah, but on the new one, it doesn't say square.
Not what we have to approve. So. And I do remember that.
Yeah.
But that's not what we're being asked to approve.
Yeah. Maybe we could get a copy of the latest version sent out to all the planning board members in, in email, and then we can.
That is it.
That's it.
That's it.
And that's what Pat did, five people, the Finance Director, the Land Use Coordinator.
I'm going to sort you, it's like, I have my hands scratched.
Oh, my God.
See this? That's the letter to us, I'll take my hands off. I knew I had a clean one. But that would be if we took this.
That was constructed by people.
And put it in that format, it might help a lot.
Maybe we should have a copy of the old one, too, when you send us the, the. Yeah.
Yeah.
But you're right, Janice, if we, if this was in that format, it might help.
Yep.
Nate has a clean copy. I know, I just gave it to him.
Will you make me a clean copy?
I have mine at, at home. I believe, I kept it at home.
All right, so do we, we have to make? No, we have to recommend this, or not recommend it.
We don't have to make a decision today, though. Because they, they can, they, the Board of Selectmen can vote at any meeting to make that change.
Right, it's not, it doesn't have to go to town meetings, so we can, it could, it's work in progress.
So if someone comes in tomorrow to build a new house, are they paying these new fees or?
I know, they should be paying the old fees, because we haven't recommended them to the selectmen yet.
So our next meeting is on February 11? Yeah, I know, I'm going to figure that out.
I have three meetings about.
February 11th to 25th, yeah.
That night as well? Okay. So.
These are. Oh, these are the new ones, okay.
These are prepared.
All right, so our next meeting is scheduled for
February.
February 11th. Um.
Okay.
Some of us have served on other committees. And there are three public hearings that night.
Really?
Yes.
There have to be at three of them.
There's a three, no, wait.
No, the school public hearing is at night, and the fire public hearing.
Yeah, there's two, there's two. I'm on, I'm on the fire committee, I'm on the fire budget committee. Jane is on the school and the fire, I don't know how she's going to do that.
Um.
Run quickly.
So.
Thank you.
We can do the 12th.
So the question is, can we?
Okay, when did we, where did we send that, um, subdivision to?
It's March 8th, May, March 8th or April 8th? April 8th.
April 8th.
So.
So we don't have to meet on the 11th?
So we can choose not to meet? Or can we move our meeting on the 11th to the 12th? Yeah, that's what my thought, or do we meet earlier?
Budget won't be meeting, I know that, on Wednesday.
Well, we don't have to have two meetings in a month. We're only required to have one. So we don't have to have that meeting, if we have the other.
So we'll go with the fees on the 25th then?
So the next meeting for the planning board will be February 25th. Well, that's the, I mean, that's our next, that's the fourth.
That's the fourth.
That's the the fourth Tuesday of February. Do that five times fast.
Fourth Tuesday.
Do we have nothing on the 11th?
That would be, it would look to me like February 25th is the next meeting. We meet on Tuesday.
Yep.
Second and fourth.
So my next, so. Well, the when's election day? March 8th, 11th, or 4th?
Second Tuesday in March.
So. That means that the next two months, we'll only have one meeting. Because we traditionally don't meet on the same day as election day.
Well, how many people would not be able to meet on the 11th?
I think we took care of the election day on the calendar.
Eric and Jane.
Two.
Four of us could meet, and we could discuss.
You can, okay.
The fees, if you want, I mean.
Yeah, that's fine.
If you want us to have a meeting, or.
I hate canceling it, so.
I can tell you're struggling over it, but on the other hand, if we don't have any cases, then we're just going to have one meeting.
Which is fine, we used to only have one meeting years ago.
Yep.
Until we got really busy.
We'll meet on the 25th.
So we can meet on the 25th?
I think everybody wants to have a voice on on the.
Fees.
Yeah, on the fees.
Fees.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
The 25th.
25th on.
The 25th and not the 11th.
One day.
One day.
February 25th.
Yes, sir.
Day in March.
And one in March.
I probably won't be here in March 1.
Why, it's not like it's close to the 15th of April or?
Town meeting's on the 15th of March.
That's, that's, no.
That's what, yeah, it is.
Okay.
And it.
Oh, town meeting, oh, the town, the actual town meeting.
It's on the 15th of March for commercial.
Partnerships and escorts are due on March 15th.
That's right.
Who needs sleep? That's right.
Definitely not.
Fire district meeting.
Definitely, I'm Irish.
I'm not Irish.
That's the fire district meeting, okay, so. So we've got a consent, we have a consensus that our, our next meeting will be February 25th.
Yes.
Everyone's okay with that?
Yes.
Ever, yes, the, the 11th is canceled.
Pat, is that okay?
Fine by me.
All right. Motion to adjourn. Seconded. All those in favor, there's no debating, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Have a nice day, we are adjourned at 7:07, please turn off the camera and stop the recording.
Good night, folks.
Good night.
Good night.